All right, I'd like to call the Marvin Planning Board Meeting on April 19th, 2022 to order. We have a quorum. If we could. Someone would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Hunter's got one change.
Yeah, I'm gonna add. Under Items of Discussion, three, just a general planning update. I was gonna do this anyway, but we're just gonna add it as an agenda item.
Okay, can you?
And it's already updated on your, on described.
So what does that mean?
Do we have to refresh?
Uh, you may have to refresh.
So just like a motion, you had to adopt.
As amended.
All right, can I, there it is, all right. Can I get a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Nice. All right, Ken?
I, I, I. I just figured it out. Did that work better?
The mic's open.
That works.
And feel free to use your little, um, your little hand if it's easier to do that.
It has to be vocal.
Oh, it has to be vocal, so if you did not use the hand and it was, it come off, yeah.
Not be the party paper.
Just kidding, just kidding, because Austin's always the party paper.
Add to my job. Add to my title.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
All right. Anyone have any questions, comments, adjustments? All right, someone can make a motion to approve.
Someone to approve.
Second? Second, Linda? All in favor?
Aye.
Our thrilling chicken discussion.
From last time?
Aye.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right, so moved. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No public here. And the, and there's no public up there either. It's Ken's, Ken's audio, Ken's microphone.
You're saying Ken's mom.
Ken's mom, it's Ken's mom.
Ken's mic.
All right, then moving on. All right, items of discussion, number one, discussion of recommendation of Village of Marvin zoning designations for annexation properties Marvin Villas subdivision. Hunter?
All right, so this one should be pretty straightforward. We, the village has received a annexation petition for its five individual properties. It's the properties right across from the park that are, I guess, built almost. Basically, part of the annexation process is that they are currently part of Union County and zoned. Union County is R40. And if to be annexed in, we must give them a zoning designation of our zoning classifications. And so basically, this is a, this is a step in that process. I can go through this all or just explain, like, basically, we have two residential districts, Marvin Residential and our Marvin RUC. It's recommended that we go with the Marvin RUC because the Marvin RUC allows for, it basically states, the intent of that is for properties that are annexed into the Village of Marvin that has different setbacks than what our Marvin Residential District does. And so eliminating non-conformities and stuff, the RUC will kind of cover that because on their final plat that is attached in your guys' package, you can see that the side setbacks, I think, were fifteen. Yeah, yeah, are fifteen. And, um.
Ken's having trouble here.
He's having trouble here. Let me just hang on.
I don't know the Clorox box. Or it's happening now.
Any better, Ken?
Let me, let me double check. Audio settings. If we can just get in that new building, everything will be so much better. Ken, is that any better?
What villas? They're not villas.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
They're just regularly.
Hell.
It's real muddy.
Real muddy.
Yeah, I agree, it's a little bit hard to hear.
I wonder if it's our internet strength.
Well, I can hear Ken, I can hear Ken just fine.
If you look in your upper right, you see it's green, it's showing you, you're good, we're good.
That's so weird. Optimize.
I mean, I can hear you folks fine, so I don't know. And I can, and I can hear Bob just fine.
That's because Bob lives closer to, to Village Hall.
Is this any better?
Good yelling.
No.
I'm trying to yell.
Can you hear me now?
There's a microphone.
I was gonna say on the speaker, put that to the handset, is that?
No, the speaker needs to come to the TV.
Where's your microphone located?
Uh, in the center of the table. Let me see if there's some kind of.
What if you talk straight into it?
Is this any better?
This is a test of emergency broadcast system.
So we gotta pass it around? We're, we're on.
I guess if, if someone will be talking for a while, try to move it closer to them, that might help, you know, you take it off.
Okay, hopefully that'll help. Okay.
Yes.
None of my staff would know who that is. That happens to me frequently.
So, yeah, getting back to this is that the side setbacks are fifteen. The properties are slightly under an acre, and so it's just staff's recommendation to identify them as Marvin RUC. Once again, this subdivision, all of this was approved by Union, uh, by Union County. And so basically, it's just now where they're annexing in, and we would have then future zoning for any type of accessory structures, pools, and so on. But anything regarding the actual development, I mean, itself is, is already done, so.
Essential Services Class Two and Three, is that, will they be getting, like, trash removals, that type of thing, or?
Well, yeah, if you're annexed in, they do get trash removal, but the Essential Services Two and Three in zoning is just defined as like, like if it, uh, like a, technically, a pump station is what, is like a, one of those. Like, certain structures like that, that's regarding to utility are, are what is classified as Essential Services.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Hunter or comments? Because I'm assuming that we need to vote on this.
Yes. Do you want us to recommend designating all the Marvin Villa properties RUC Marvin Residential? So, yeah. So we gotta make a motion, basically, I'll do that.
Okay.
I recommend designating all the Marvin Villa properties RUC Marvin Residential, Union County District.
Do I have a second? Rich?
I'll second.
And all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, raising our hands. All right, so moved. All right, discussion recommendation zoning text amendment to Section 151.054, accessory uses and structures. And I believe Austin handed out a physical paper.
You have one more, Austin. Right, yeah, you already read it.
What did I do with the other ones? There were more. They disappeared. They're right here. This hot off the press.
Buy for candy?
It's like Rolos.
They're root beer.
You lost me at root beer. You can roll a Rolo to your palace.
But they do look like Rolos.
They do.
A little bit.
They're even better frozen.
But we digress.
All right, so for those of you guys online, see Hunter's screen with the?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to get that to work because I've been working on this. I, in your packets, I included some surrounding municipalities and kind of what their language states and just, you know, provide a little background. One, um, looking at amending our process for pools, specifically the ones that are in the rear yard that abut, a side yard or even some that are in the side yard per council request and some of our previous discussion. Especially use permit, they're seeing more and more of those, and they're all kind of straightforward and compliant. So that, that, that's one thing that prompted this change. Two is the agriculture buildings per our discussion over the last few months over the animal regulations and stuff, amending, amending these. As well as just maybe looking at, in this, and we'll, and we'll kind of go through it, is some of my recommendations of different setbacks for detached accessory structures overall. Looking at other ordinances and stuff, ours, ours basically stays the same as the principal structure. One, I think that needs to be clarified because that can be interpreted in two different ways. Basically, the way I interpret that is go back to that plat that we just saw. If it says, if the side setback for whatever the lot is, if it's twenty, fifteen, ten or five, that's the same setback as your, the accessory structure. Based off of, you know, my experience and looking at others, I think that can be lowered to ten. And if it's, I mean, I think Weddington Chase might be, Weddington Chase and obviously the ICDs that have five-foot yard setbacks, we can add something in there that says that they, that those, if the smaller setback's lower than ten and is on the plat, then that setback can still, um, would apply. But I'm gonna, we'll go through this, basically tonight, I want to get some comments, feedback, discussion on this. We don't necessarily have to make a recommendation tonight unless we feel comfortable. This is kind of a first preliminary of, hey, this is, well, what's currently here, just here's some of staff recommendations, wanting to get some input. And then potentially, we can bring it back in May because it's not going to go to council until June anyway. So we do have time, time specifically on this. So is there any questions before I kind of go into it? So in your packets and on this, I did include what are current 151.054 state. In the handout, I've highlighted kind of the, the sections that I was talking about, looking at amending, and then at the end of the memo is where we'll kind of get into that discussion. And I'll probably just skip straight to that. And I can go back and forth, but, you know, the first one, first recommendation is our current accessory structures and uses don't have like a minimum dimension. Typically, it's anywhere, like, anything under a hundred and forty-four square feet or a hundred square feet, like if it's a ten-by-ten or twelve-by-twelve, it's typically, typically exempt. I think it would be wise to probably add something like that.
The pre-built, you know, storage buildings that are brought in, they still fall under that, or is it just something that's quote site built?
They should. And it comes down, and it comes down to size. Anything that's foundation and kind of actually being a permanent structure, I think, should be permitted.
But if it's, you know, one of those they haul in on a truck and just set it down on concrete blocks, you know, there's no foundation.
And that's what, and that's.
You know.
That's, that's.
It's a shed.
Correct. And that's all like good points on why part of that's part of the recommendation. It doesn't necessarily have to be a size minimum, we can require a permit for everything, but part of this thing gets into some of like a chicken coop or a dog, I mean, certain things like that. And, and, and it's going to be open to probably staffs in turn, but, you know, it's.
I understand a minimum size, but, yeah. Quite honestly, my brother-in-law has gotten a couple of those, one up in the mountains and one in Weddington now, they're pretty good sized.
Yeah, and if they're over.
They're still just sitting on concrete blocks.
If they're over that size.
Yeah, we've, we've got a big one. I have a twelve this day, I've got a big one.
Yeah, if they're, if they're over that size, it doesn't matter if they're permitted or not, they're technically should be required by ordinance, that's also something we can put in there for clarification. I, I interpret as, the way our ordinance is written now, I would require a permit for those.
Put it in the may ass.
It's the same thing, if I, basically, if you put up a shed and didn't get a permit, and it was, let's just say it, fifteen by fifteen, and it was five, ten feet off your side property line and your neighbor called, I would go to you, you would then be required to get a zoning permit, and since it's not a permit structure, you would be required to move it. So, so, I mean, that, that's the standard protocol, if, if something's not compliant, the first is to get a zoning permit. Well, you can't get a zoning permit if you're not compliant, so then you gotta get it compliant or you'd have to have it removed. So, we definitely, it, it's definitely better if it's movable than, than not.
I think it'd be good though to add to note that, you know, even, even portable structures, if they're over, what are our minimum sizes, requires zoning permit?
Yeah, I, like I said, I think some of that might be clarified in the definition, but I can definitely.
Yeah, it just popped in my head. We were talking about, you know, accessory structures and setbacks and stuff.
I mean, what about tree houses?
That's where I, I actually like a, one that's built in a tree, okay.
I mean, we had a treehouse, I think, years and years ago, like a legit big treehouse built in our backyard, and it's like up in the trees, so. But we had it done by a treehouse builder, like.
Were you on one of those shows?
Yeah.
He just did one over for the Montessori school.
We inspect their treehouses now?
Like a treehouse, like a big owl sitting in a tree.
Over the higher mountain properties.
It's kind of the same concept from a staff level that most of the time, I will say that most people call and I say, is a permit required, and most of the time, I'm gonna say yes, because even, for example, our ordinance states like fences, for example, I tell people to get up for, for that just so they, they saying, hey, this is where we're putting it, yeah, exactly. So in theory, and especially if it's over that, over that size, yes, I mean, it would be required.
In theory.
In theory. Eh, but yeah, I mean, once again, if somebody puts one up.
Ten-year-old kids permits on stuff.
If one, and somebody puts one up, and as long as it's not an issue, I mean, I, I don't see, like, I, that's kind of a, that's a, that's a new one, I guess, that I've been asked. And I've honestly, even through my research of ordinances, I don't think anything ever addresses treehouses.
I would be grandfathered in, obviously, but, um, but I mean, it does have a roof on it and, you know, that's a dad. Maybe. I don't know. Now we're all interested in your treehouse.
But.
Clearly didn't need to be permitted.
And I still, I mean, I, like I said, that's still one that's probably, it's in that gray area where if somebody inquires about it, I'd probably say, go ahead and get one. And if not, it's not something that I would probably be enforcing that'd be torn down because I, I don't really have the enforceable means potentially. Because, because it's in that gray.
We ain't ripping down treehouses.
So.
What are you asking us to do?
I guess one with a minimum is, do, what, are you guys okay with, with something like that? I was thinking, some, I've seen a twelve-by-twelve. I thought ten-by-ten was simpler, that's, I mean, that's kind of always been my standard, is anything under a hundred square feet, doesn't need a permit. But if it's. And I mean, and that's, like I said, this is just, these are all kind of my staff recommendations and for discussion, so if we're on board with that, then what I'll do.
Can I ask one question, though?
Yeah.
Same question. You're on the back, sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, um, so my, so my acreage is like, we have very, we're very wide, and we do have a building like on the, like one of the sheds, like on the side, but we've got hundreds and hundreds of feet in between us and the neighbor.
Yeah.
And you can't even see the thing, it's like completely surrounded by trees. So what about people who are on acreage and side yards, if they've got?
Well, they're allowed in the side yard. Detached accessory structures are allowed in the side yard. It says same as principal.
Oh, 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 I'm, I wasn't looking, yeah, okay, thank you, I wasn't looking at the heading, so.
And that's like the other interpretation, you know, I also mentioned how that says that there's two interpretations of that. The other interpretation of that meaning the side setback, it must still be, it doesn't actually ever clarify if it can be in the side yard, it just states that it can't be in the front yard because it's got to be behind the established principal line. I'm, from a staff level, I, side yards, fine, most ordinances allow them in the side yard, some that are very smaller lots don't, I mean, but that, like, that interpretation could also mean, like, it must be the same setback as the house where it stays behind the house and in the same footprint in the house, so you can never see it from the roof. That's not how I interpret it, but that's how it could also read to someone. But that's, that's one of the recommendations is that, well, one, is, is Planning Board okay with like that first recommendation at a hundred square feet?
I think so, I think it's fair.
All right, now I'll get into two. Which is kind of then going into your conversation, so looking at it, then doing the, uh, the clarifying and amending the setbacks for detached accessory structures. This would only apply to the detached accessory structures, not agriculture buildings or pools, those have separate regulations, and we'll kind of get into that. But it's, it's my recommendation, uh, doing a minimum setback from the side of ten, rear, I said five, eight also can be ten, in my opinion. I, it's, that's kind of just, I went bare minimum for discussion purposes, really.
What is a not, a no animal agricultural building?
Well, can, I'm, yeah.
I thought that's where we were.
No, we're all number two.
Where are we?
So, recommendation, items of discussion.
I was on the second page, I'm sorry, I don't know where we are.
So we're, if, you go to the last or the third page?
Yeah, the third.
So the first, yeah, the first page, the first page and a half are literally what is current. I highlighted yellow as to reference of what the items of discussion.
Right, and I, I just don't, I don't know what that, I don't know what agricultural building means.
Yeah, so that's, we'll get that into three. I'm, I'm gonna get two real quick.
Okay.
So two does then go into the side and rear yard setbacks for detached accessory structures. I think it should be clarified, which, I know I'm kind of having you guys flip pages, but then, like, once again, in the current ordinance on the first page here, where this chart is, and what's highlighted in yellow, basically, it'd say the side would say ten feet, and then front can say that same thing slash, it would then say that no accessory structures are allowed in the front yard. Um, just to clarify and make it simple. And then the side, the minimum side setback would be ten, and the minimum rear setback would be ten, five over ten.
If, if we say just not in the front, setback, that's, that's, you know, the front setback is eighty, you know, eighty-five feet, and the house is setback a hundred and twenty feet already.
Well, front yard, the, the way this reads means front yard, I would just clarify because the, what it means is all behind the established building line is wherever the house is, is behind it.
That would be a better way to.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't change that, I would then just also put in place, not allowed in like front yard or something like that, like, just to clarify.
Which I thought the accessory structures were not allowed in the front yard.
Correct, they're not, I'm not trying, that, I'm not recommending that they're allowed to be. I just had that high because I wanted to, I guess, one, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that, because I do get questions on what does that mean? But basically, I tell everybody, if you were to walk out of this building right now, hold your arms out, look left and right, everything in front of that's front yard. Go ahead.
So what about some of like the older home sites that they have acres? And then the house is in the back, and they want to put something in between the back and the front? If you've got acres, I mean, like, so then do they just apply for?
The, the current ordinance allows for, it says that any, a lot's greater than three acres, well, actually, I still think that doesn't allow it in the front.
But they could apply the same way that you would apply to have your pool, even though it's a side yard that abuts a front yard, whatever, they can still apply to, that, I, I guess I'm just saying, like, if you end up.
No, I, like, yeah, there's a couple.
Barn in or something else, right, so like on one of our pieces of property, the house is going to be in the very back, so it's going to be at the back of a five-acre lot. If I want to come in later, you just don't, I mean, like, I have five acres in front between the house and the roof, like, what, how does that work? Can I apply for a?
No, enough.
Oh.
It wouldn't be.
That's another.
You said that, variance then.
Yeah. It would be, yeah, um.
We granted two variances recently for.
We, we did one. We just did the one, the detached garage.
For the house over, the white one that they're building?
Yeah.
So that's in their front yard?
Correct. They got a variance for it.
Okay, so people can still apply.
Yeah.
It's not a hard no for everybody.
No.
It's a, we prefer not to, and I'm sure, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure that you're over in.
It's a no.
We don't let somebody like building something necessarily in their front yard, but if you've got space, like those people had space, like maybe.
It's a no unless you have an extenuating circumstance, a hardship, the hardship that's due to like the loud of your property.
So you've got a pasture.
Right, if I go and convert a horse pasture and I'll put in a shed for my tractor.
Like that, that applicant had, their, their side yard wasn't suitable for a built for a detached garage, neither was their rear yard because of.
Yeah, the house, that, that house had to be setback so far because of what the previous owner of the lot did and the soil and those side yards.
It used to be a riding ring.
Yeah, and apparently, they cut down trees and then just burned them and then like.
He did.
Yeah, and, and then just put soil on top of it, so that's why the house has to sit back as far as it does. But you actually, you bring up a good point. I think that that's something that I think I, I need, I need to look into slash if the rest of the board's kind of in agreeance of maybe looking at a special circumstance, it's kind of already how we have some special regulations, but if you have the acreage in your house that's back, then we could do it as a special use permit and not necessarily a variance, and then they would just have to have this, those other requirements. But I, I do think you're, you're, you gotta have at least probably, I mean.
Because there's, there are some larger old home sites here where people on purpose build at the back of their property. And if they want to add in a pool and a cabana and still nobody's going to see it, like, I don't think it's any of our business. I mean, I understand it's our business, but you know what I mean, I don't think we just want to give them a hard no on the front end.
And that's where, um, I have here another, the other notes of potential. One of those things that does come into question is detached garages. Being allowed in the front yard, right, for example, that one, or I've gotten other questions about it. That's one in a lot of other ordinances you see are still an accessory, but are defined, like how, how we define agriculture and swimming. They, like, detached would have its own sep- separate regulations instead of what, just the ten-foot setbacks and so on. So, you know, that's another, another thought is like either allowing them in the front yard with special regulations or really thinking about those uses on what could be allowed in the front yard and then maybe having special regulations for those. For example, in your guys' packets, Valdez has that for detached garages, they have a special use permit. It's like, it can be allowed in the side or rear yard if it meets these, but if it's allowed in the front yard, it, there's a special use permit, then it has to be applied for and approved. And then there's additional requirements for that, like, something like that can be done for front yards.
So, I know that we have, um, we went through this several years ago about detached structures with not being allowed to have, and I don't think toilets was an issue, I think that's my HOA, but, um, it's just weird, but I think it was like to prevent outhouses back in the eighties, but, uh, they can't have like a full working kitchen.
They can't be livable.
Can't be livable, right.
So.
But if you had like a shop.
Well, and, and it was never, you know, it was, it was an unwritten, I think, at that point in time, direction. How do you define?
Dwelling, so.
And we were talking about, so.
And someone said, well, you know, if you've got a kitchen in it, then that's a dwelling, not necessarily.
It's the way I define it, and I even think some of this was clarified with 160D and in our definitions. Dwellings are defined, pretty much, you got three, three things. I always tell people, you, if you have two of the, two of the three, you're fine, if you have all three, and which one's a one's a bathroom, one's a bedroom, but a bedroom can just be defined as an open space, and then the third is a kitchen slash a cooking source. And so detached accessory structures can be, I have, I mean, think like pool houses might have a bathroom and stuff, and like, you can have like an area to, a bedroom's always going to be part of it because it, even though it's an open space, it's gonna, it can be defined as a bedroom or interpreted as a bedroom. But if it's a pool house and it has a bathroom, it can just can't have like a stove top or something like that, like it could have a fridge, like it, that, it just cannot then be defined or be in that gray area of what is a dwelling.
So it's more of a combination of things rather than one.
Because if you have those three, then technically, it could be a standalone livable space, which we do allow for accessory dwellings, but only if they're attached to the house, which I also think is kind of weird, but I understand the intent.
Especially like for granny pods or like, you know, if you guys.
Because I've got.
It's attached to the house, how's that an accessory structure?
It's not. It's not.
Exactly.
Okay.
I, the intent, I think, there was that, once again, people didn't have.
They didn't want apartments, people like.
Okay, yeah.
Back to, I thought somewhere there was a definition for bedroom. A bedroom had to have a closet. And this is not a bedroom.
Maybe, I, I would.
Walk-in closet.
I, I'll have to go look, but I do, I do know.
Had a window.
Part of the 160D changes that were also, were, I mean, made is that they updated the definition of what is a dwelling. And so ours is compliant with whatever the state says, and so that's, I'll have to go double check with that, but.
That's not really what we were discussing.
Well, it, it does fall in this category.
We sort of, we do this.
It's all good, as long as I get the feedback needed.
Well, I mean, if we're talking about, I mean, it is, in a way, it is, um, it is relevant because more and more people are building she sheds and he sheds and man caves and I mean, like, people want, you know, they might not have enough space in their home if they're now teleporting to work, not teleporting, telecommuting to work. That'd be awesome! I want to teleport to work. That'd be awesome, I'm still waiting for the Jetsons, it just not happened, but, um, but you know, with all the, the sheds are, they're actually coming out with a new thing with sheds that are like going to be HUD compliant.
Yeah.
So it's like, it, it's coming, um, and, you know, like, people are also tricking out metal, I mean, I've looked at every type of accessory dwelling structure possible. So it's like, what do our ordinances cover it?
Yeah, because, so accessory dwelling is defined separately than an accessory structure. And basically, and I can pull it up, but.
But we're not allowed an accessory dwelling. But we're not allowed an accessory dwelling unless it is attached to.
Correct. So we pretty much just don't allow accessory dwellings. Because try, that was one of the, I, I'll never forget. That was one of the first things that I read. When, when I first started just going through the ordinance, and I'm like, all this is, is another room on the house, like why? Like somebody, I don't know why somebody would go through the process of getting a special use permit just to have a quote unquote, an accessory dwelling that's tied to the house. When they could just add on to their house and then add a separate entrance and just be good with it, as long as it's compliant with setbacks. So.
I, I don't know, like as a, as an, as a person, I would never do this, cause, but there are people who. You know, would, as parents age. They, they need to take care of their parents and, you know, I know Melinda like built onto her house for her parents. Um, not everyone, you know what I mean? Like there are all these new ways of. Like with the granny pods that are like not permanent structures. You know, just to keep things close. So while it's, uh, while it's not necessarily like, it doesn't really, you know, jive with Marvin ordinances. I mean, like as a planning board, is it not also our jobs to? Think about the needs of the na- our neighbors and like, are we? Are we making life more difficult for people because we're so strict or is it, is this just? We think this is, we, we're sticking to it. Like I, I just want to talk about it because I think.
Let's sort of throw this out, sort of like the, uh, the, the S U P for pools in the rear yard. Putting a side yard that, you know, the direction came back down from council, changed this. Maybe instead of us just going to council and say, hey, we think we ought to do this. I mean, cause that's a pretty major for Marvin and our ordinances, relatively major item.
Well, what I can do, and as I mentioned, since like we're not necess- like this isn't going straight to council. Is we can still discuss and make that part of our recommendation and during the May meeting, I can. Provide that discussion to council saying, hey, these are the recommended changes that will be coming to you during June. Um, and, and, and have that discussion with them. Um, I'll mention that one of the things before I left my previous job was working in bowties. Um. On accessory dwellings and their regulations and that we did make it like a special use permit and have certain requirements. Uh, one, I know you mentioned granny pod, but it's like. We don't, uh, in bowties, they don't allow like manufactured homes to be, um, an accessory dwelling. Uh, there, there's ways to do it and I think still cover where you would, it could be through a special use permit process and have the regulations where. Uh, typically it's less than maybe one third of the total square footage of the home is your maximum square footage. Um. You can also, it's, it's in another gray area, put parameters on there that it can't be rented out. Um, and that, and that's where. That, that's where I'm like, yeah, that's where like, I, I understand, I think why the intent and why this was passed the way it was. Um, I do think it's dumb. And not, not, but I, I also, that's the thing is how, how would the public or how would it fit here is, that's a very good conversation that, uh. That's we should think about and that's something I can definitely.
Or if you got a boomerang kid, you know, you don't want him in your house.
And, and I think that as, I mean, I think as things go forward and you want to talk about the realities of childcare in our area, et cetera, and things like that. Like I think that we're going to see more people choose. To do things like, I mean, I mean, it just doesn't seem to be that far fetched, right? And, but then also still wanting to maintain autonomy and have space from a pragmatic perspective, right? I mean, we've heard from how many developers saying like. We need more small sized homes for retiring boomers, like we need more of this space, we need more of this, we need more of this, I mean, like. We are collectively as a board hearing that on a regular basis, and if that can happen in people's private residences or on their property, I, I think it would make.
Especially when you have plenty of setback space, like.
Absolutely. So maybe a special use permit to John's spot, that could, I think that that could, for all of this make a lot of sense.
Just give it the thumbs up, but it's like if they propose it and like, you know. Like my grandmother has, um, been getting stages of Alzheimer's and she, we pay like over four thousand dollars a month for. And she's not even in a memory unit yet, like it is out of control, the, the amount of money that, that you have to pay for an aging. Loved one. And so, you know, if you've got. The space that you can't necessarily, you know, you don't necessarily want them, you want to give them some autonomy. I don't know.
This is sort of skipping around a little bit, but, you know, referring to a special use permit. You know, right now, back to the swimming pool situation, a special use permit had to come here. And I thought part of this conversation was that staff would handle pool, is it still a special use? How do you differentiate or?
For pools specific?
Or, or whatever.
So in what's being proposed, you guys want to go to the last page?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, number five. Okay, is that. Basically the language agreed, if a swimming pool is proposed on a lot where rear yard busts a side yard of an adjacent lot, the pool must have. A minimum of a twenty-five foot rear setback, which currently the ordinance states twenty, I'm also recommending that we change it to fifteen for standard pools. Just, once again, it's kind of just a practicality standpoint, I. If you read other ordinances, they, most of the time pools are also then just wrapped up in the same and have the same setbacks to whatever the accessory structure is. Um, but the reason I say twenty-five on the rear is because if they cover, if the, if you think if it's a rear yard that it busts a side yard. That's going to be twenty-five there and then whatever the side yard setback, which is going to be anywhere from ten to fifteen in between the houses. Um, that can be greater. I just thought twenty-five was kind of reasonable. If you think about most of the ones that we've seen. Um, I, in all honesty, you could probably even go up to thirty or forty. Uh, because basically what I'm trying to do with this revision is state, here are the parameters. If you don't meet this, then you have to apply for a special use permit. So then it still limits the number that comes to planning board and council.
Oh, you mean, so, so if they meet all of this, then they don't need a special use?
Mm-hmm. It would be, it would just be, be sta- staff approved through zoning permit.
So, and so you're recommending that, cause I know that we talked about the letter from the adjacent property owners. Being, I, I think we initially said, um. That it would be looked upon more favorably if you had it, but you're saying if you just want to sail through, you need it.
Yeah, well, that's what I, so basically these are the three, uh, on number five, those one, uh, one, two and three. Those first three are basically what the general special requirements will be. I, I'm okay with having a greater rear setback than twenty-five. I just do that. On there. I mean, um, I can go back through the, the recent ones that the village has approved. And look at the average of what those rear setbacks are and do something around that. Um, but I want to say most of those are still. Within probably thirty to forty feet at least from the rear property line itself.
Can we require that?
That's why it's highlighted.
I was about to say, and that I'm questioning.
I, I read, well, I read something, it was Conover's ordinance that stated something. Sort of not for pools, but, uh, but it's there because we did discuss it.
Mm-hmm.
And if I have the legal means per. The attorney's review of the final product of this, then I think that's something that we would do. Or that, no, that's something that, that planning board I think would like.
Haven't we had an applicant in the past who literally was not able to get in touch with their neighbors because they're people that's always out of town?
Well, and that's where.
Like strongly recommend it. I mean, like.
Well, and that's, so that's, once again, so these first three are then what would be all staff administrative approved. Then four says that the proposed swimming pool where the rear yard busts a side yard on an adjacent lot. Not meeting the special requirements described herein, or would just say above, shall be subject to a special use permit. So basically it's stating if you don't meet these special requirements, then you can apply for a special use permit and get that approval.
They can't find the neighbor. He's already gone.
Yeah.
Then, then.
Then they have to go through us.
Yeah.
And same thing with the setbacks. I mean, I, and that's why I, I think you, I think in my opinion, probably could do thirty to forty. If there's any comment there. Um, but once again, so then let's say they have a. Law, a wide backyard. And they're then only twenty-five, then they would have to go through the special use, but basically the intent of this is to limit the number of.
But I was, I was thinking back over all of our, the things that we always seemed to touch on for all of these in the past. On the setback, I think, and fence and landscaping.
But those two are required by ordinance already technically.
Okay, I was, they're, I assume that all that stuff is covered somewhere else in the ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Fence, fence and landscape is, on a normal zoning permit for a pool that's in the rear yard, that it busts other rear, whatever, doesn't have, have to go through it. They provide me where the pool is going, distance to setbacks, and then a landscape plan stating like. It's as simple as like X-ing and what type of trees to be planted and so on. And, and then also like showing where a fence will be put in.
All right, I just, I, I thought it was, I was just a clarification.
And then, yeah. Then the other thing I always put in on permits is that it must comply with one fifty, I, even though I, I, I'd say must. I review it and it's compliant, but then to cover it, I put in the, the conditions that it must comply with one fifty, one point zero five four, which is this. And then one fifty, one point zero four six, which is our landscaping buffering. I print them out, that's highlighted with those sections, attach them. And then so if they don't put in a fence or if they don't put in the landscaping after the fact, well, I stated that it had to be compliant. You also sign this. What you propose is compliant and then that gives me enforceable means to really proceed with however it needs to be done. So.
So. Cause it looks like we've got some additional things to talk about at the bottom of the last page.
So, yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions and comments about one, two, three?
Well, I want to get into three. We haven't talked about three yet. And we can come back. That, that will be the, but basically, so, and I kind of should have mentioned this in start. What I'm doing is I want to get, these are kind of the proposed generic recommendations. If planning board is okay with those, then I will prepare the final, um. Draft for the next meeting. And I've already got noted on here to look at accessory dwellings, potentially add late, uh, additional language for that, but it specifically talk about it with council at the May meeting. Um. But it's, so if there's anything in here that's on my recommendations that. You guys want to discuss, then that's kind of where I wanted to, you know, get that feedback comment and, and your guys' input, because at the end of the day, it's going to be. What's going to be presented back to you guys at the next meeting.
So, sorry, I just realized in two, you made another suggestion in C of just doing ten feet. Setbacks for both the rear and the side.
Correct.
Did we discuss which ones we, which one we prefer? I like just doing ten?
I do too.
Anytime you can, make it simple.
Five gets a little close.
I said five because some ordinances in that provided to you guys said five on the side and rear. The other reason I said five is because our current ordinance allows ten feet off the rear and then says the side setback has to be the same. So it's like, well, then we'll maybe just knock it down five, like, you know. But then I was like, in all honesty, I think ten and ten would be the most simplest thing.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're good with ten on the, the side and ten on the rear. Um, and then I just said, just clarify that they're not allowed in the front yard. They currently. Already state that, but I just once again have that clarification. So we're good with those two. So. Do we want to go back to pools real quick and go over those and make sure we're all good with those before we get into agriculture, since we were discussing those? Cause the other. Other recommendation for pools is since we're kind of changing the other setbacks, is allowing fifteen foot on the. Uh, rear and side and ten feet for the decking. Once, um, part of this. Part of this is from a staff level where I have received questions, comments like. Why is it like this? Because once again, we do have certain properties in Marvin that. Maybe only have five, ten foot setbacks. I mean, and Weddington Chase is a great example. Yeah, and so. I, and, and all honesty, I don't see a difference between, especially since you had already had that landscaping and the fence and all that other stuff. I don't see any issue of making it where it can be closer not to one property. Um, it's really going to be a handful of properties that. Would help to an extent, but that's the thing is I think our ordinance is currently limiting. Certain pri- uh, s- some residents of putting in certain things because. They were annexed in or just, I mean, they, they could have a turn for a variance, but that's the other thing is do we really want to have variance applications coming in left and right?
You're not supposed to.
Yeah.
Supposed to be few and far between.
Those guys don't have anything to do.
If we do our job well, you get very few variants.
So why does the pool equipment? Say, uh, twenty feet side and rear yard, like why? Pool equipment is so, I mean, I just was wondering why is it not in the rear? Like why is everything not?
We.
Rear yard? Cause pool equipment is.
Sometimes pool equipment's on the side of that. It depends on where, there, it depends on where their water lines at sometimes.
Plus they want to hide it from the pool a lot of times.
Yes. So sometimes I've seen them on like the side of the house, like on right beside where like they keep their barbecue and stuff. Um, but our ordinance also requires that the school, uh, pool equipment be adequately screened already. Um.
And I guess it would be fairly near the house, but no, not necessarily.
Fair, uh, the house where the pool, uh, of the.
The pool equipment should be, I mean, uh, I've actually seen pool equipment. Away for like on the, on the backside of the pool.
Right, up close to the property line.
Yeah, mine's like right up against my house.
That's one and two, to be honest, that I'm looking at other ordinances, I didn't really seem. I, I've never seen pool equipment kind of setbacks. Do, I mean, that's something that's kind of different.
I mean, honestly, it can be noisy and like, and it's unsightly if it's not screened, so.
I think also you have to be concerned about heaters that are going to be too close to the structure. That potentially if you've got an overhang and when you're heating up your hot tub. I mean, that's potentially can be a fire hazard. So that's why most people use the, move the heaters away with the equipment.
Like, I'm sorry, are you, you mean like the heating and cooling equipment for the water, the pool?
Correct, right. So it's typically a gas heater or it could be electric heater, but still if it's a gas heater, it's putting out a lot of BTUs. And so you would want to set it away from the house.
And that's where I think, I, that's why I didn't have it highlighted to change. You can have a pool close to the property lines, but then the equipment. Just, I mean, still has to comply with what's already there, because. It's not, that's, it's not allowing the equipment to be any closer to adjoining dwellings or we are, we don't have any regulations that state it specifically has to be. X amount of feet from the, the house on the property. Um. Other, some ordinances do that, some ordinances do that with accessory structures in general, state that they have to be like five, ten feet from the primary structure of the property. I didn't want to go that far. I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's got different, like I don't, I don't, my hot tub is like not, they don't have a spa, like so my heating equipment is all like together, so. Um, I don't have that issue, but I, I mean, hopefully now we're just. Their equipment just out in the side yard is with random.
Yeah, mo- all the ones that I see are typically.
They're integrated into the design, yeah.
Correct. Cause that's the thing is mo- most of the designs that I've seen. They're coming off the rear. They typically either connect into a patio or they're installing that decking and patio. Um, and then the pool equipment's typically tucked in somewhere by the house or it's tucked in like. At the very back of maybe the pool, pool itself, but that's where if the minimum's fifteen. It then lent, if the minimum for the pool is fifteen. Then it does limit where the equipment can be placed, but I still think that's where that safeguard is of the impact of adjoining dwellings of the noise and, and stuff. If we want to make it fifteen, I mean, I just, I didn't think about changing that, but I don't know if it's really going to be an. Issue.
Well, they can always apply for.
Yeah.
C E P if it's, yeah. Is everybody good with also fifteen feet rear yard for pool decking, which is?
Well, it'd be fifteen feet for the pool itself and then ten feet for the decking.
Oh, wait, that's not what this says.
Your prob- yeah, what's highlight, like I said, what's highlighted is what's current. And so on the last page is where it states. I should have just done the chart like I did for agriculture buildings, but. Yeah, does anybody have any? Issues with making, like I said, basically shrinking it five feet any, for, for both of those.
And why are we shrinking it?
Consistency. Uh, uh, like I said, that's, that's, if you look at our current ordinance. The, one, it says detached accessory structures, the side is the same as the principal and then the rear is ten. When you get in the pools, it then specifically states twenty and twenty-five.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And there's certain neighborhoods, developments that. Don't have twenty to twenty-five in certain directions. Yes, they could apply for variance, but it's kind of like. This is where it, it, us having this one zoning district, oh, I mean, and then even the R, the R U C. Um, kind of hinders certain things like this. Um. So I think it's just, I think it's easier to just shrink it slightly where than it does open, I mean, just kind of do a better catchall. Of all the, all the, um, properties in Marvin, all the residential properties in Marvin. Most people are still going to be that twenty feet off.
So the, the fifteen feet is the water line?
Correct.
That's just really close to someone's backyard. I don't know, like, I, I don't have this issue, so. I mean, I'd rather hear for, I know, like, I I don't even have a neighbor in Marvin. Do you guys have any, I mean, if someone put a pool in?
I've got two neighbors who are putting the pool two houses down from me, and I'm watching them being built, and it's about twenty-five feet from the back to the property line. And it seems like it's more than enough, and they do have a neighbor behind them.
Twenty-five feet, but they're talking about fifteen feet from the edge of the water.
I guess, yeah, it's basically, it's just shrinking it, the, this is the bare, this is the minimum requirement, so it's shrinking our minimum allowance from twenty feet of water's edge to fifteen.
I just think people will take it every time. But, I don't know, I just wouldn't want someone, I wouldn't want a pool that close to mine.
Well, but on a, if you were looking at a half acre lawn, they're still going to be from the house behind it. Still plenty of space, but.
And that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying, like, a lot, this really applies to, like, Weddington Chase and, um.
Smaller lot areas, anywhere from point three nine to half a, an acre.
Yeah, cause if you read a lot of other ordinances, they just, sometimes pools are just considered the same as what the detach are, so if they're ten, if the minimum for detached accessory structure is ten, then pools can be ten. I'm not suggesting go all the way that far, but I think with that, it does open up some flexibility, especially on some of these, these lots. And I mean, just.
They can't ask for that flexibility with the way it's written if they leave it alone?
No. They could. The only way they could is if it reads like the same as the side, as the primary structure, cause then it would say whatever those developments are. Like, once again, this is where our, this is why I'm trying to rewrite this, our ordinance, but our ordinance states for resident, the residential, the normal setbacks for that, everything in yellow on that zoning map, is fifty feet on the front, forty on the rear, and twenty on the sides. And then there's this little thing that says, if the plat, or if the development was recorded and the plat shows smaller setbacks, you go off the smaller setbacks. You know what I have to do every single time I get a permit, I have to go then find the final plat of that development, or at least when this, when I started until I got familiar with them, and know what those setbacks were.
So they still can?
Not with pools, because that's where it is, pools are so specific, pools don't have any of those, like, it, it just, it doesn't have any of that flexibility.
Could we write it, to your point, then, could we write it to be reflective then of, so then, for those neighborhoods, it is okay, but then if someone does have more space, don't put it ten feet away from your neighbor's line?
Well, they probably wouldn't, but.
But, but, but.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, the other part.
That's not what we're here for.
Let's say that we change, reduce it to ten feet from, for the quote deck. They give them a problem getting a fence and landscaping and everything in?
That's still, let's start with.
That's their problem, huh?
No, cause fence can be right on the property line, or the fence can go around the decking, and then the, the landscaping go on the property line.
I guess my point is, I don't want to punish the people, right, I don't want to like, overboard refuse people who live in neighborhoods who bought on whatever size lot, right, so like, you're, if you have room and you want to put in a pool and not have, like, that's your business. However, I don't know that that means we want to change it for everybody, so. All the outright lots. Right, so if you can then leave the spacing where it is, but then allow for the people who are in those neighborhoods, I think that that would make a whole lot of sense.
See, and.
And that way we don't, you know, quibble over ten feet for everybody else in.
So what I'll, what I'll do for this is, I will look, I, I, I can't I can't get neighborhood specific. I'm gonna, what it would have to state, it would state similar to
Final.
The final plat.
Setback.
But, for example, the final plat for Weddington Chase is five foot on the side, so then it's like, that's where it's tricky, and even in like, uh, Canterfield Creek, I think it's fifteen feet on the side. Um, and those are two different zoning districts, so it's like, that's where I, I completely agree and would like, I, that, from a staff level, that's where it gets trickier. I, I, I can potentially make it work, I just got to figure out what may be the best approach, and that's why the generic way in this is what would be ea- easier to enforce and just.
And I appreciate that it'd be easier, but I don't know if that is, that sounds like a very equal solution, but it doesn't sound like a very equitable solution. And I think that we would rather go with the latter, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's fine, I can look into it, and that's something. That will, that with the accessory dwellings will be stuff that I can for the final product, we can look at, and I can provide that, uh, in the final draft, and as well as gives me time to give me a month to.
And I think that that actually ties Hunter to a lot of what we're talking about, right, with regards to like, if you have five acres and you want to put a detached garage between, you know, I'm thinking about, oh, they have the Ukrainian flag flying under the American flag every year. Yes, thank you, right, I was thinking about, they've got that nice barn that's out front, and their house is set way back through there, right, like, there's no reason that you can't keep your, but I think that that's really what we're talking about is.
And see, and that's where.
Equity versus zip, that one.
I wanted to.
Oh, I know, yes, cause they served on the council, my parents.
I wanted to, if I could rewrite it all, and just not worry about what's currently there. Y- yeah, and that's where it's like, I'm trying to find, like, leave what's here, and still take that in ten, and try to do these revisions via the staff level. And that's, it's, it's a kind of, that's where it's my mind kind of gets narrowed in on certain things like that, and it's like, yeah, there's ways to do it, I just, I didn't think of it, when I'm kind of going through like the way I am, instead of just kind of rewriting it.
So for the, um, for the different, like, zoning districts, um, for those, that was just a reflex, sorry, you, you had a weird.
I, I jolted for a second, yeah, spasm there.
So the different zoning districts, it, are they, um, they all have a minimum, they all have different minimum setbacks? Because they, are they RUC, are they, are, are they all now, are, are some of them now Marvin, like, right, you know, like?
So ninety-five, ninety percent of the properties in Marvin are zoned Marvin residential. The only two neighbor, three neighborhoods that aren't are Weddington Chase, Providence, Quinn, and whatever the one is across the street. Anyways, Willow Creek, those are zoned Marvin RUC, and same with what we just designated with those.
They're all farms too. Cause they were built while in the, in the county, and then came in.
Yeah.
They're all farms too.
And there, and there's other properties that were still annexed, and then we zoned Marvin R, but that's where, this is where, if you read our ordinance, it's the funniest thing, is that the Marvin R has these generic setbacks, as I explained, but then, right, it, under the purpose, I can pull it up if you, you would like, it literally states if the final plat of the develop, of the subdivision has smaller set- setbacks, then what is outlined in this chapter, the smaller setbacks apply. Then you go to RUC, it doesn't even have minimums, it just says, see final plat of development. So where in other areas, they might have three to four different residential districts with different lot, lot dimension sizes, so, you know, anywhere from an acre or three fours, and then different setbacks for all those, kind of like how we did for the Heritage District. Um, because if you're the person here, or you had somebody on staff that's been here a long time and knows, like, it's not that bad, but from my point of view of me coming in and having to like go through each development, like, I've got a system now, and I, you know, pick up on it, but it's not, it should just be straight in the zoning ordinance.
So, so I guess my question is, um, are the RUCs the only ones that have those, like, much smaller setbacks, or are, are there some resident, like?
There's current, there are some Marvin R that has smaller.
Okay, and, so I was just, I was just wondering, like, could we keep the, keep it the way that it is, but make some sort of like, add, like, add an additional comment that just says for RUC, you know, a minimum of, of the ten and the fifteen, you know what I mean, so we're still.
We.
We're not necessarily.
That could work for now, and that would cover, that would probably save, that would probably get the job, get what I'm trying to do just fine, um.
With more of a Band-Aid rather than?
Yeah, but I don't even know if it's a Band-Aid that ever is in a.
Need to be readjusted?
Yeah. Just because, um, yeah, I mean, that, that could work, that's something, like I said, I can, what I'll do is based off your guys' comments and feedback, I will re- rewrite that part of those setbacks for pools specifically, and, um, provide that in the final recommendation next month. But, that's basically, like I said, I got the feedback that I needed, you guys weren't comfortable with that, and I'm good with it, but we still want to find a way to.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to hurt the, the RUCs and, and whoever has these more minimum setbacks, but we don't also want to.
And, and what, what, and I'll give you a little bit, quick background, what spawned this was a pool application in Weddington Chase that the house, it's a weird, kind of a unique kind of property. I talked to Chaplain, our, our attorney on this, and it's basically like, he gets where I was coming, how it reads in the other section of the ordinance, and he's like, yeah, it, but it's just so specific in pools that it doesn't give you any flexibility where like other sections of the ordinances does. Um, and where that, yes, that other sections of the ordinance that flexibility is great, but that's like I said, that's where it just can get confusing at a staff level, even like, you know, if you're a property owner and trying to interpret it level, um. So that's kind of what spawned that recommendation of lowering those setbacks, but, but yeah, I can look into that and provide that in that final recommendation to you guys.
Cool.
Other than, okay, so we, we're good with four now. We're good with five overall, I mean, pretty much, I, I'm.
If you can get away with three.
I'm doubtful of that.
A dot, A dot three.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll try to talk to our, when I have this final draft, I'll go ahead and try sending it to Chaplain and getting his feedback before it's presented to you guys in that. So the final thing is the agricultural buildings, so this is number three on the recommendation in discussion. So this chart is all new recommendations, the current chart basically says no animals, horses, and then it says poultry, and it's got other livestock and all that. To answer your question about what is no, what is a no animal agriculture building from earlier, it's basically a shed. I mean, it's.
Tractor storage.
Oh, so my shed is not, would not be covered under one, because it holds hay, and it holds a tractor, it would be covered under?
This.
Got it, so it is not accessories.
In theory, if we're doing our side, and that, that can probably just be taken out. Uh, so if we, if we're amending the detached accessory setbacks to be ten feet, ten on the, uh, ten on the side and rear, really, the no animals agriculture building can just be deleted for clarification, because if you're just using it for storage of whatever,
Yeah.
and no animals, then it would just fall under that same as a detached accessory structure.
There's no reason to have two if it's the same thing.
Correct.
Okay. Then you have people going, what is the no animals?
But, but I have had.
Genuinely rep.
Yeah, I know.
I have had people, then you, the, um, I have had people use this as a loophole of how it's currently written. In two different, yeah. So, I'll delete it, but I also need to think about that, because what also entails under agriculture buildings is there are certain exemptions for the acreage, uh, basically like, detach has a height and size ma- maximum, like, it basically says detached accessory structure is like the total, so if it's a pool house, but whatever, shall not exceed two-thirds of the total uh, square footage of the primary. But an accessory structure can exceed that, or, sorry, an agricultural building can exceed that two-thirds maximum. And so what people do is say that it's for no, that, and they're keeping tractors and certain things in it, but, so that might be, I'm okay with scratching it, but I also didn't want to make I'm, because that would sort of close the loophole per se. Uh.
I mean, it makes, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Gracie Manor, I mean, I know that doesn't apply to a lot of things, but that blue barn over there is ginormous, although Gracie Manor, whatever's called now. Yeah, but I mean, it isn't, I, I think there's a difference, a difference between agriculture, like, what is agricultural?
And our agriculture definition is very broad.
Well, they, well, they have horses in it too. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah, that is a gorgeous barn though, a color.
Or, have you ever been in it?
I've not, I saw the pictures, I'm like, yeah. I saw the pictures online.
Heated, cool.
Well, there's clearly enough stairs.
It's the Cadillac of barns, apparently.
Yeah, you know, for the shit of fur to live, it's beautiful.
Wow, must be nice.
Making a barn.
Car siding and all that stuff. Married for money instead of for love.
I did both.
There you go.
So with this, so I, I, I'm going to remove it, cause I, I don't think it's one needed if we're already amending the other one, and two, that would also kind of close that loophole. If they're a true bona fide farm, and a, a true agricultural use and have that tax exemption, they're already exempt from certain of the regulations, the zoning ordinance anyway, so like, if it's actually being utilized for agriculture use, as in storage of hay, tractors, whatever, then it covers, but that basically would then close that loophole where somebody can use it, saying they're using it for an agricultural purpose and, or.
So they have to have an exemption, they would have to have like a?
They have the, they have to have the bona fide farm exemption, it's a tax exemption.
Right, cause like, we definitely don't have that, but I guess here's my question, though, like, it sounds like it may be, I think that there's parts of ours that exceed the twelve feet, which is the way that it's written now. Because if you have a tractor with a round bale of hay, right, like a nine hundred pound of bale of hay, and you just hold it up there, you're going to be.
Oh, the, the height maximum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, like, how does that work, because like, we genuinely stacked two round bales of hay, so our shed, and I'm, I'm just asking, cause pragmatically, there are still horse properties here. You have to go out shade rows or things like that.
Depending upon how far back it is, you get, you can go higher.
Right, but we're deleting this.
Right, I mean, that's where it was.
Well, and yeah, and maybe.
The new one.
Okay, well then maybe we just.
Just, I mean, just something to think about, right, to make sure that realistically you could get a tractor with a bale of hay on the spear held up, to be able to stack two round bales of hay in a barn, if you're going to build a new one. Thank God you're here, cause I'm.
That's a very specific definition.
Well, you know, cause like, but, lots of people use round bales of hay, right, like, you see them go down row with tractors all the time, like, it's a.
We say all the time.
Well, what I'll do.
Swear I live with a girl who's behind us, but like, I see it.
I think I've never seen it.
I'm going to call, you should come up and have a beer.
Can you, can you send them this way, it'll probably slow this down?
They do, when we get the hay put off our front yard. We get like thirty round bales at a time, right, and they end up stacked in the front yard, and people just slow down, and they start going, what in the, yeah, and it's, hey, being.
Add that to our traffic policy.
It's the future, but. We've only had one trying to walk out of our yard.
Just wait until we get our hands on this road out here, we're going slower.
So what, what I'll do though, is right now, I'll put an asterisk beside it, um, and since we're changing, and that's what's fun about text revisions, if you change one thing, then how does it impact a lot of other things? And I'll look into that further and provide a recommendation with the final. But, I mean, that's a very good, valid point, I mean, cause especially with that height, I think there's a way to do it. Potential, we can just leave it, but I just need to make sure I can close that, I mean, close the loophole in one way or another, and that might just be in the definition part.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you'll, you're going to.
I've got them, I've got one I'm fixing, if you need for your.
Nah, I, they won't, they won't pass the final one tonight.
So, getting into then horses, currently it says sixty. I'm okay with sixty, I did fifty, and here's why. Cause then I would do poultry and fowl at fifty.
Keep it simple.
To keep it consistent, I didn't think it should be sixty and sixty. Um, this was another one that, if you look at all other ordinances, they were all, I mean, it could have setbacks were all over the place with that. I will say Hunter's Village was sixty for horse, horses and horses barn. Weddington's is sixty. I don't know what Waxall's is.
I mean, honestly, a lot of the horse barns in Marvin are already built, so it's like, you're not going to see, you know, I mean.
I don't think we have a horse barn revival.
Correct, part of this is the rea- I was trying to keep it consistent for the poultry and fowl part that's coming next, and part of the discussion that came up at our last meeting. So if you guys have no hesitations, I mean, all that's doing is lowering it by, by ten feet on each. The other thing I did add, that's new, is that whole right section of this chart, um, minimum setback from adjoining dwellings. I think this is important, because if you're lowering the setbacks on the side and rear, it's important to be X amount of feet, whatever, from an adjoining dwelling, because that's really how it's going to impact from a smell, noise, and, and standpoint. I did a hundred, that's also going to be open for discussion. I did a hundred for horses, I, and once again, that's the barn itself. I don't know if that's going to create any non-for means, um, not too wor- and once again, though, if it did.
Again, most of the barns are already built, so.
Correct.
It's going to be grandfathered.
Is there any comments, questions, concerns on that?
My only question is, is the last one, other livestock? That's a hundred and fifty.
Well, that's just, that's a setback.
I'll get, yeah, and we'll get into that. Is anybody have?
Llamas, take your llamas?
Yeah.
How packed is, that are no longer there.
Well, this is just talking about dwellings and then the other one that we approved. Talked about what kind of livestock you could have.
Well, yeah, there's a lot, it's, trust me, that, that's. I'm honestly about to just probably blow out this ordinance and re-arrange it all and clarify, but. With that being said, yes, the way our agricultural is defined is. Once again, very broad includes a bunch of ran, animals and so on.
Blowing it all, it might be easier at this point.
And so that's why, yeah, other livestock, the other reason I left, I, I really didn't touch the hundred and fifty feet on the other livestock, because part of the reason it says a word waste removal.
Well, yeah.
So we can do other last, really, you, you could really do horses and other livestock and do fifty feet, fifty feet and a hundred and just really just put all of that in the same category. The reason I think poultry and foul should stay as, stay away is I think it should be a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. Once again, you can encompass them all into one. I just think, based off of our discussion over the last two lines and just certain things that. Chicken, I mean, once again, it's, it's about the distance from adjoining dwellings, in my opinion, that really need to make sure that's addressed. And, and even the setback, like. This is one thing that I think I have, uh, on the very last, uh, bullet items that says like other potential things. Is defining coop run or whatever for chickens, because. Some might fall under that hundred square foot maximum that we just talked about. Uh, some can be deemed not as a permanent structure, cause some coop slash runs are movable, by off Amazon. And that's where, that's where the gray area is in our, in our thing right now.
Do we address free range, like free ranging chickens?
No.
Like they might have a coop to sleep in, but like, are they, like, do we address?
We did in the stuff that we discussed last time, council. That didn't get approved as presented from you guys, council wants me to work on some. Certain things to be brought back, cause some of that was like kind of too in depth from what they think we should enforce. But in simple terms, like once again, our current ordinance does not have any regulations on free ranging versus having to be kept in a pin or run.
I didn't even think about that, but we should, because. We don't want, we don't want the chicken, chickens to get loose. Like what does that mean, like free, you know what I mean, free range, is it, is it around property, did they, are they?
Most ordinance, yeah, most ordinances say they must be, once again, just same as the horses must be fenced in and kept in a confined area.
But yeah.
And that's where, like, some of this is like. This is, this is the, this is the initial, like, big discussion of this. But there's other things that as we go through the discussion, we're catching and then I knew that was gonna happen, I'm like, yep, that's a good point, let me go, let's fix that as why we're doing all this. And some of that's kind of getting into the definitions or just the details of. Some of the things like that. So what I can do, if, if we're okay with these setbacks, we can proceed and I'll make a note to. Research slash figure out how to. That some of us in a plan to that animal ordinance, but that's. The way I was trying to do that amendment in some of it was put some of that in the zoning. For that specific reason, like some of the examples I provided to, to you guys, as well as the applicant had like that animal keeping and the zoning had those specific regulations. And I think that was the simplest way, that's how I've done it before, and specifically in that says no free range. And honestly, what kind of held it up is it her wanting to put it into the animal control part. It got held up from the attorney, just for really clarification slash, once again, kind of, uh. You're changing this, but then you're not addressing this section. So all that might tie in, but I'll still think about that as we go further, as we keep working on this, this section here.
So will we see that again, the animal portion? Will it now just live into in?
No.
It's a new text, I don't know.
Yeah, but it's an ordinance, it's not a zoning text now.
Hmm, good point.
That's why I still wanna have, I think, in my opinion, I think it still should be in zoning. Chaplain, the attorney kind of disagreed there, I think it should be in zoning, even though I'm, I'm the code enforcement officer and the zoning administrator slash enforcement officer for that. There's different.
Words, salmon pants.
Yeah, there's different, um, enforcement procedures that one our ordinance states, as well as from the state level of what we can. Uh, and on how we can enforce it, and so I think if you kind of have them both, it kind of gives you that flexibility, so. To answer your question, yes, I think you will see something regarding animals and it potentially be included with this at, at the next meeting.
Okay, so you'll, um, we will not vote on this.
Nope.
No, and just so.
Adjustments and resubmit.
Yeah, so just to clarify. Looking at recommending accessory dwelling, uh, new accessory dwelling language to, you know, allow them as a detached structure. I'll discuss that with council in May. The pool setback to remain as, as is, but looking at some type of flexibility or same as principal structure similarity. For the special kind of situations that brought this up. No animal building, gonna look at further, either leaving, but at least, uh, closing the loophole. And then the fourth item would be potentially the regulations for the agricultural accessory use in general. Which is originally what was supposed to be addressed, but yes. Did I miss anything? All right, so really the big thing is. As most of you guys are aware, um, we have received our first Marvin Heritage District rezoning application. Um, it is from Jones Homes, uh, for the Odell and previous properties. If you guys recall, they did get a major subdivision by rights sketch plan approval for twenty-nine lots. Back in March from council that came to you guys, they now have submitted a rezoning. Uh, application for the Heritage District, which is a conditional zoning district. Um, for sixty-eight lots, all of those lots fall under that quarter acre, that small lot. The small lot, lot. Uh, outlined in the Form Base Code for the Heritage District. I'm not gonna get into a lot of the, I guess, site or the details about the application and stuff, cause I wanna just make you guys aware and then want you guys to understand the. The process, when it's expected to come to you guys for review and so on. Um, so that, that's been formally submitted, their first, their first step is to have a public involvement meeting, which is scheduled for next Wednesday. Um, they have three different time slots, two to four, four to six, six to eight. They did that pro, per just some comments from the last meeting and trying to provide that actual flexibility and accommodations for the public. Because a lot of the, uh, a lot of the, some of the feedback from the public at the last time was. That the village was not being, you know, thoughtful of, you know, people moving around with the Charlotte and so on. Even though once again, we don't, we, we have the ordinance procedure outlined, but it's up to the applicant to make the decision on when to hold, hold them, as long as it's compliant with that. And all our ordinance states is that they must have one P I M that has two sessions and one must be. During working hours and one must be after working hours and working hours is defined anytime after five o'clock. So with that being said, they, they did do another session for some of those, uh, that accommodation. That will be held at New Village Hall right now.
We're working on that.
If. If it's not, the, um, we will send out. A, we're gonna put, I guess, put something on the social media, just to notify that it's moved to here.
There'll be, there'll be a physical notice posted over there to come here.
It's all contingent upon us getting the C O and we're not really sure the status on that, because.
New construction is fantastic.
Everybody's on vacation this week, so, uh. With that being said, so yeah, that, their P I Ms next week, feel free to, to come. Next Wednesday.
Two P M, four P M and six P M.
Yeah, there's three sessions, these sessions are, they're. Yeah, these sessions are intended to be, um. There, there's an agenda, so they'll kind of go through their, uh, submittal. Um, however, it's also still kind of like an open house, cause that really, for the most part, they, they probably get through their presentation and, and questions within an hour. And so even if, um, you can't show up at the start of one of those, but can come in between. Uh, the applicant's gonna have, the applicant will be here, staff will be here and they'll have, um. Poster, or visuals and that, it's just then kind of like an open house type, uh, meeting, so really, if you show up anytime between. Two P M and seven fifty-nine. You will, uh.
Though, please don't show up at seven fifty-nine, that's a terrible idea.
I have, I have two questions about this.
For the record.
This, um. Is there a plan been made public yet? Someone was asking me if they could.
It's public, but we.
It hasn't been sent out.
Okay.
Yeah, because the two things there is one, the size, I think you tried to send an email.
I couldn't get it, I could not even send it out.
I'm able to, I don't know.
I had to physically deliver it to someone who requested it.
I'm able to send it, it's, cause some people have maximum size email. Um, we, we discussed today, Austin was gone on vacation last week. Um, but we discussed today on getting it uploaded to our website and getting that projects page. Uh, so yes, it, it, I mean, it is public, it's just, it's, we're.
We haven't had the medium to distribute it yet.
Correct.
Okay, I ju, I just didn't want to overstep as a planning board member.
No, if you.
Share it.
If you have it.
So I told my person, no, I'm not giving it to you until I.
It was, it was a complete application of public record as of last week.
Okay, um, my other question with it is, um, I heard a rumor that Union County denied their, their pump station. But they're still going forward with this, so A, is that true and B, is the plan then gonna change? And is Union County, like, cause we're, if everyone's gonna be looking and commenting on this, but then the pump station's gonna be different, I think.
So right now, right now, yeah, that news was made, brought to our attention last Wednesday, that Union County. Board of Commissioners slash act, I mean, they were acting as the Water and Sewer Commission, whatever. Voted to deny all residential projects in the county that were installing a pump station. That included the Heritage Subdivision, that included Weddington Green, that included three other subdivisions throughout Union County. And it also included Waxalls Newtown Hall. Just thought, you know, throw that out there.
I'm glad we snuck ours in.
So just across the board, those pump stations?
We have been trying to get clarification from the county on what all that entails, what that means, is there future, like, what? Were, that, oh, yeah. Getting down to how does this impact their submittal? Right now it doesn't, because this is a, it's a rezoning petition. Um, it is the, uh, the conditional zoning and part of the Heritage District's middle is that site specific plan, yes. But they are able to proceed, because this is what is being presented.
They just can't build.
Correct, so in theory.
Cause you can't deceptic with all those.
Correct, so in theory, let's say, I think, tentatively, the timeline where it would be voted on by council would be August-ish. If it, if it goes through the process, um, without any like having to go back for revisions or certain things like this. Because they can propose that, but it doesn't necessarily for the ske, for the rezoning part, have to have that approval from Union County. That, that is something that they'll have to have during, if approved, their preliminary plot and construction document phase.
How, how many times is someone allowed to? Submit, resubmit, cause I mean, like, so right now, this is, this is. Too, well, more than that on this particular piece of property, but, um. Like if they don't get approved, then are they gonna then resubmit again, like, you know, just, it's just a lot of work.
Well, previously, other than that, the by right one that we approved, everything else was withdrawn before it got to approvals, right?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Yes, but there were still.
That was a different developer too.
There were still, there's been multiple developers, but there's still like meetings, it got to the stage where like.
But I mean, they, they never, they never did.
I don't think we can shut down some middles.
You can't.
I think there is a year.
If it's, if it's denied, there's a time.
Yeah, before they can resubmit.
You can amend, you can amend a proposal.
Correct, yeah, they, yeah. They can amend, like, they can amend it, like, basically when council ma, council makes their final decision. Um, and that's why I said tentatively, like, first going to council in August, because it could be. Where it goes to council in August, but then they, that's part of that conditional thing where they wanna approve it with some different, you know, amendments or recommended, whatever. Um, then yes, and that's still, it's basically still an open application, they did not vote to deny the application, they voted to just either, you know. Table it and, uh, waiting on revisions.
Can I ask a good question? If, if, so this doesn't work out for them because of the pump station and they have to go back to a different, um, alternative sewage, something or another, I don't know. Does this, if they, if they get the zoning? Does that then basically, um. What they submitted and got approved prior to the twenty-nine lot, does that, does that basically gate that and they'd have to? Like, or would that still be on the table if they wanted to go back to?
Well, the twenty-nine lot also had a pump station.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it also had like more, and there was more lots where they could.
Whatever, so. If this, if this gets approved as submitted, in theory, um. Then yes, it's a site specific plan and that's, that property is in rezoned to Marvin Heritage District Residential only. And that's that site specific plan that this applicant or whatever has to then build according to that plan. They have. They have it, according to our ordinance, they have been a year after approval to get the preliminary plot and construction documents. That is something I've actually talked to Tom about and looked at, that I think most places, especially with those detail, like larger type developments like this. They have a vesting period of like two to three years. Meaning that basically once approved, they, that, that plan is a vested plan. So. Right now, basically, if they were to get approved and then not do anything for a year, they would have to then, unless they ask for some type of extension or, or they weren't. Basically, like, if they got approved and I hadn't, didn't hear anything from them for a year, then either them or a future applicant would then have to reapply. If they get approved and then yes, whatever with the sewer gets, gets, um. Not worked out, then they have to then come and, like, basically any type of then amendment to their site plan, like, if they continue as the applicant. Then they will have to then come back and do a conditional zoning amendment. Which is like a text amendment type thing, so it then come, it would still kind of go through a similar process as a rezoning, it would be a. Po, uh, there would be a public hearing for council and there will also be, we'll go to planning board for recommendation and council. Basically amending whatever their submitted site plan is.
Okay, but they couldn't, once it's zoned Heritage District, they could still do the, no, they couldn't do the twenty-nine lots.
No, but if they do not get approved for this, they can go, the, the twenty-nine has that year vesting, so.
They can like fall back on it.
Correct, and that's why it was done that way, because. The Heritage District, and the applicant will speak more about this on the P I M, but in simple terms, like, when I started, you know, that they were working and following the Heritage District. Then it didn't get approved in June, it didn't get approved until January, they had contractual obligations with the current property owners, so they decided in. To go with the current by right. Um, they were working, you know, and had this Heritage District's middle, and so they decided like, you know, we have, now have this by right approval. To go through and just seek approval on this, because if not, then yes, they have that by right.
But they're still not closed on it.
No, and part of this also then, that, the whole sewer thing with the county right now. Not the like, i- it throws a wrench into multiple things. Including the Heritage District and including the roundabout, that's another good question that I'm not a hundred percent sure on, because Broadmoor is already approved.
And Broadmoor also like, looks like, they're doing like custom homes, I mean, like, it says custom homes now, but I thought those were like smaller lots.
They're not, they're not smaller lots, they're a conservation subdivision.
Okay.
That's like what, eight tents, seven, three quarters of an acre?
I thought it was gonna be like.
They can't be less than, they can't be less than thirty thousand square feet. Uh, let me see this. The minimum square footage for lots is thirty thousand square feet and it was, and it's like thirty percent of the total lots can be under thirty thousand, but never less than twenty-five thousand.
What is that in acres?
Three fourths of an acre, three fourths of an acre to. A half an acres, yeah.
Okay.
Cause three fourths is thirty thousand square feet.
So it looks like they started maybe selling, but nothing's been done.
They haven't sold any of the lots.
Well, I mean, the, the signs are up.
Uh, yeah, they're, they're, so Broadmoor was approved in twenty seventeen by a previous developer. Beechwood Homes purchased the property and are following the already approved plans that the village has approved. Uh, cause they've already got the, everything, the fin, to the final plot was approved for Broadmoor. The question about water and sewer, the sewer. Is a good one that I talked. Is a good one that I talked to the, uh, the project manager for Beechwood Homes on this, because they were already approved. By the county. As of July of last year.
They should be fine.
To put in that pump station, so all the, all the, all the ones that were killed were some new submittals. So yes, as far as I know, Broadmoor is still fine, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Yeah, it's.
Just, can you send me that, would you mind sending me that plat just whenever you?
Yeah, I can.
Where did you pull that?
It got approved before I came on the planning board, so, uh, Hunter sent this to me.
Oh, got it, okay. I was, I kept refreshing the page thinking that that was gonna show up electronic, sorry.
Could this, can this be uploaded to Eastrag?
He, he needs, he needs an email at this point, it's, uh, it's more, it's a lot of work on the backend to get it on here.
I can attend, I can try to email the submittal to.
Cause if I, if I, if I put that, if I put that in here, it's gonna show up in a minute, and that's not relevant to, it's actually on the agenda.
All right, I will, I will forward this.
But getting back to just the Heritage Middle, um. I have created. Pusharts for everybody involved, staff, public, boards, applicants. Of. The whole process for the Heritage Middle. So. Right now, the applicant's on step four, which, I mean, basically the first four is literally like preliminary stuff, and so. Coordinate public involvement meeting, notice a public involvement meeting, and hold the first public involvement meeting. This will most likely be presented to you guys for preliminary review, the application at the May meeting as well. Um, cause the next step after that first public involvement meeting is says planning board preliminary review. Um, you guys are not making any decision on that, um, it's literally kind of. Initial review.
Or, or private personal, uh, private involved, uh, public involved.
Yeah, and, but it's also still, you know, once again, the same. Questions, comments, recommendations, suggestions, everything to the applicant. After that, they have to hold then a second P I M meeting, well, let me phrase that. You guys have the option to do a joint meeting with council for the preliminary review. Council's already aware of it. That, so I mean, I, that's up to you guys, but I, I think it would be easier, I mean, if you guys wanna know where council stands, I mean, that, that's where that kind of is happened.
No reason to rush this through either.
No, um. Then the second one, then they have to have a second public involvement meeting, and then after the second public involvement meeting is technically. When it actually, the process typically starts, it's like that, after the second public involvement meeting is where it says zoning administrator review and recommendation. Well, I'm doing that now, I'm going through the review, looking for the compliance of what the Heritage District is, working with. Uh, council and just, you know, other, just other comments and questions received on, you know, hey. Look at, you know, is there something that we can do about this, this and this? Um, but technically, that's when I have to just provide my. Full recommendation, um. After that, then it comes to planning board again, so that's why, I mean, in May. I see it being in planning board in June and then potentially July before, that's if, once again, no big revisions are made from the plan. Um. You got, there is a contractual type or legal from the state or the. Thing that this has to, I think, once a formal application submitted, there's X amount of days, but it's still like six to eight months, um, but.
Even with revisions and everything, when we ask for revisions, the clock doesn't reset.
Well, revisions are.
Part of that six to eight months.
Revisions are if it's not compliant. Like, basically, if you guys have comments that you don't want sixty-eight homes.
Right.
They don't necessarily have to take that into consideration, like, I mean, they can, but it's not, at the end of the day, I mean, that's part of their submittal.
So what happens in between the first public interest meeting and the second?
Your guys review, basically, what the public involvement meetings are, are for. Questions, comments, feedback, I mean, but no, obviously, like, formal discussion. Um, same thing, then it goes to planning board.
I'm sorry, how is that captured, how is, how is the public comment captured, if it's just like a?
Take minutes.
Okay, so it's not like an open house?
So we have a vested interest in then ensuring that the public understands what's happening. At the first minute, at the first meeting, as if there are concerns. Those may then show up in reflected changes before the second meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So having said that, I think you know where this is gonna go, I have some concerns with regards, since this is now part of our conversation, I have some concerns. With regards to the letter that went out about this first public notice. My concern is that it is not immediately clear that this is. Describing a fundamental change to what people have had the opportunity to comment on before. And they may not realize that this is not the second in the series of what was already there.
Well, this isn't the second of what's already there.
No, I'm fully aware, but I'm saying for the general public, they may not realize that.
They might not realize a new submission.
That there's a new one and this is the first of now two for the new submission, which is now sixty-eight homes as opposed to twenty-nine homes. Right, and so I think that. Given that we are on this new adventure, and I wanna make sure that this goes, Austin, whatever we have to say to put this out there. I think that what we are on this new adventure, not for bait, but nonetheless, I think it is paramount that we are crystal clear. With our communication, and I believe that this letter is lacking in that clarity, now, my understanding is that. The letter is on behalf of the developer and not on behalf of the village.
Correct.
But it shows up on village letterhead, so our neighbors are not gonna care, and I think that it gives the sign. Without it being crystal clear that this is for a revised. And I understand, I understood when I read it. What this meant because I had seen this picture. By accident over in the village hall when Rohit was talking about this on the front end, right, cause he slipped it when we were, they were still trying to decide which of the two to submit initially. And I was like, oh, I know what that is, right, and then an hour later this other one showed up, but I think that, I think it is our duty. And I know that we could at least make suggestions as, since they seem especially agreeable. To having additional times to ensure that people are able to attend, they have a vested interest in this going well, right, especially with those suggested setbacks. They have, they have, you know, a vested interest, so then be clear. I'm afraid that if we are not clear, that. Our constituents are going to think that it's shady, and we certainly don't want that.
No, not.
I would encourage them going forward to be crystal clear. And provide as much information to the public, because this is, this is a very big change. And the Heritage District in general, given what people thought about it and given the small margins in which it came to fruition, we need to be cautious and careful.
Now, I'll make sure for the second P I M that all that information's there and that's clarified, that's, like I said, that's part of the reason also why I created these. Because like, what I'm gonna have. Uh, during each meeting is, like I said, I'm, where, where we're at in the process, and this is literally the whole process, um. But, you know, so then once they, they say, okay, this is the second P I M, this also shows for like a public standpoint of like. When, um. Like, there's these things where it says public info, right here. That's all times where stuff has been sent to the public or the public will be notified on these meetings.
Well, no, I appreciate that, but I think it's, I'm not, I'm not questioning the process by which we get there, I'm questioning the information that we're sending.
Yeah, and all, so all, all I'm saying is that moving forward, like, I will make sure that that's, that, from the applicant's standpoint, to let them know, to make sure that information's included. But as well as everything that we do from a staff level and or, I mean, from a board and council level. That we are keeping the public informed, because that's, there's multiple opportunities.
You know, first time this will come up on our calendar is after the. First meeting, and so when it comes out on the agenda, sort of, this is a. This is a. A, you know.
Yeah, no.
The public's already spoken once and we haven't seen.
Well, what it's gonna be, I mean, uh, in theory, like, the agenda items are gonna be the preliminary review of the Marvin Heritage District. Conditional zoning application for the Heritage subdivision, that's what it's gonna say on the agenda, now, in my memo, it's gonna have all that information. But.
We're halfway through the public comment period at that time.
Well, but I mean, you're, you're, you know, you're, that could say somehow, you know, the. To take the place of the previously approved.
And that, but see that, and that's where, that's where in these, the meetings and in the minutes, yeah, I mean, that's gonna be clarified. It's that though, and that's the same thing in the P I M meeting and like in those minutes, like, all that's clarified, it's just like, this is the first step of the process and. Trust me, like I said.
Making sure people understood that this.
Yeah.
Totally different than.
Yeah, I just think that, and I appreciate that, bottom line going forward, it needs to be crystal clear in the first step of the process. Not in the second, not in the third.
And that's, that's, like I said, all these. I'm, I've, I've already got like comments, I mean, like, stuff that I've been working and kinda talked with Tom. On saying, hey, like, I wanna change certain things in this, cause some of this doesn't make sense, but here's, your point is exactly, is that. I wanna make revisions to this to be crystal clear, but we have an application that's been submitted and it's gotta follow it by the books, and so. I can't do anything about it for this submittal, but trust me, it's. Correct, moving forward though, for, it's, that's, that's one of these things that I'm working on revision-wise, that I've already had conversations. Um, with Tom on and working on, but it, it can't hinder than this process, because they submitted the application before any of that.
So, how do we help support you and what can we help pass to ensure that you have the ability that you did not have eight days ago? To make it clear in step one, what do you need from us and how do we help support you to ensure? That if another one shows up eight days from now. It can be clear.
I mean, I, I can work with the applicant on, on clarifying that, but from a process standpoint, until we do a text amendment for it, there's nothing.
Is, is the fact.
You can't ask, I'm just asking for my clarification.
No, I can, I can convey that to the applicant and ask, and like I said, try, but. At the end of the day, if they send it out, and as long as it has that bare minimum requirements of where the meeting's at and what it's for. I can't, and I can't make him, like, I can't say, oh, we're not having your P I M because you're not putting this information.
Question, Hunter, is the ability for, the fact that we, we can, we can send these out for developers, is that in our ordinance or is that something we just offer, because we can?
I think it is, it's in our, it's in our ordinance that states that it had, that. The applicant is responsible, but it can be, um, the applicant request that it's submitted by, or. Sent out by the village and then that, they are then.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, if it's not in there, then maybe we should refuse to send it out.
Well, we, and then that's the other thing, is we can change it, change it simply that we send it out, I don't know why it was like that, I.
I was gonna ask you, did this go, or that letter, cause I got one too, does it go to all Marvin residents?
All property owners within thirteen hundred feet.
I, did it come today? I mean, I'm definitely thirteen feet. I don't, I just haven't seen it. Are there, um, was, I pulled the non-official ways, so like, right now, what she's talking about is an official notice. Are there non-official ways or like, less official, like, you know, like, the newsletter or. Emails that could go out to clarify what this is, that would, that would help. Clear up any miss, you know, miss. Uh, missing, like, uh, not, not miscommunication, but like, it would clear up what this really is. In a non-official way, so like.
Yeah, and I guess.
Could it be listed in the newsletter as an event?
Would that be something to go out in the, this week in Marvin?
We do those only every other week now, we only do those every other week now.
So this will not show up in the.
We stopped doing weekly newsletters because I didn't have the man hours.
No, I appreciate that, but I'm just, I'm, I'm just further advancing to the point that it's gonna look then. And not, I'm not suggesting that we have to do one weekly, right, but I'm just suggesting then that. If it also then doesn't show up in what's happening in Marvin, you can appreciate then the way that this could then show up to the community.
No, and like I said, that's, like, I.
And I don't know what we do, but I feel, I feel compelled.
No, that.
To do something, and I'm definitely not like, I'm not posting it on Nextdoor, because I saw those emails come through, not trying to be that person. But I, I feel like there needs to be. This is kind of a big deal, it's our first step towards the Heritage District, we all have a vested interest in seeing this be successful, we're all here because we want. I mean, this passed, right, the Heritage District passed, we have all agreed that this is something that we want, and I'm afraid that this is not a good start.
Well, it's, we're, we're gonna let, we're gonna trust the process, we, you know, we, we, we're only way up here on the process where it's gonna go through. And he's gonna get a chance to revise, we're gonna get him a chance to talk, and everybody's gonna get a chance to learn. I think it's just really a step one of how many steps?
Uh. Nine till.
I mean, so, if, if we were at step eight, I'd, I'd feel a little bit worse, but we're at step one. You know, I mean, and then there's going to be plenty of time to detail what's going on here.
And I'll be on it.
Nobody's gonna be unaware, and, and quite frankly, it's our job to be aware, and that's why we're on the planning board, so we are aware of what's happening. And we protect the citizens if something needs protected, but we're really at the beginning of it, I think we just need to trust the process and, and. Let Hunter and everybody, and all of us do our job, and it'll be, it'll be fine, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned it's step one that. You know, we need to pull the fire alarm.
Yeah, like, when the district was a pass, we used our existing conditional zoning district process. The issue with that is, is like, yeah, you read it and it, and it's worked in the past, I mean, it's a, and it's an open process, all this stuff, but. We, it, it just like, it, we, there was nothing we really could do to really anticipate or really how to, like, I always expect. Whatever the first one's gonna be is really gonna set the tone and how, one, what, expectation wise, as well as.
And our reaction to that one.
And, and yeah, and what needs to be, be changed, and so. That's just the thing, it's like, we. I've all, I've, I literally have a, a weekly planner, and I always write in there, I said M H D like. Process or revisions, research, because it's like, I want this to continue ongoing of thinking of how, like, is there anything we missed or what can we change? But then that's the only issue is that they submitted this, and yes, I anticipate, like, right after this was submitted, and we started, I broke this down and we did the flowcharts, I was like, okay. There's some certain things I think we need to clarify on and change, because like, for example. One step was that the applicant may hold a. Open meeting with council, and, and it's just, and that's what happened with Mr. Fincher, and it's just like. In my opinion, that's not smart, because if you really read it, it's like the applicant does all this stuff. Before technically staff's supposed to do any type of recommendation, review, whatever, and that is, that's where I think it has really screwed up in the past. And gotten confusing, because it's like, why is staff not reviewing and providing? What, if it's compliant or what they're, you know, what the ordinance states now and stuff, instead of letting it just kinda be driven by the applicant. Because then that's, cause the applicant doesn't know, the applicant knows what the ordinance states, but he doesn't know. A hundred percent like staff, staff should, so.
Is there gonna be a heritage, like a zoning, you know, like zoning application, um. Uh, signs will go up?
Yeah, the P I, I'm gonna go put the P I M, uh, for the rezoning. Yeah, so the, so like I said, this is a rezoning process, so. The P I M signs are gonna go up on the property when I leave, um. The, uh.
Shine the lights on so that I'll stay.
Legally, then, like, we post a property. I'll have to double check with the ordinance, cause that's actually something that Tom and I talked about, is it's unclear, because some municipalities pretty much, once an application's received. You put a sign up, and then some say that obviously you just have to post a property for when the specific public hearing date and stuff is. Um.
I think, I think in the past, we, once we get the rezoning application, we put the sign up, it confuses the heck out of people, but we, we do what we do.
Yeah, cause there's no, there's no information to like.
Yeah, but it's also though.
You see it, but you don't know where to go to get the information.
We have a pub, we have a public hearing notices page on our website that I direct people to, it has all that information, but.
We don't, we haven't set the.
But we don't have a date yet and we don't have that information, so.
We're working on this on the website, we're trying to.
I don't, I don't know what the timeline's gonna be to fully implement a module for that.
We, we discussed this today, um.
It's been on my back.
Cause I want, I mean, if you go look at our current website, you, it's one dated, cause it's got some misinformation, missed stuff about the Heritage District, but two. Uh, and also, I, I, we.
It's that projects page.
If you go to like, if you go to like Huntersville and look at their project page, that's ideally what I wanna implement, but it's also, we're not Huntersville and have the resources to do that, like, in-house right away.
Definitely don't have.
But what we wanna do is, yeah, like, have a projects page, where it's at in this process, have, um. If, I mean, Weddington is another good example, they, they have this, but it's like, they put their, you know, submitted plan, the sketch, where, and where it's at in the certain process, like. We're working on that, it's just, it's some, it's some, it's stuff that we can't do in-house, so it's kinda like we rely on. Outsourcing and then however long that takes.
Yeah, the web stuff is, especially when you're dealing with like, heavy graphic documents and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. So yeah, it, it, it is a work in progress, um.
And this was a learning for the first one, so like, the second, the next, and I think this is also. Weird because they've already got a plan, so like, many of these aren't gonna have. weird because they've already got a plan, so like, many of these aren't gonna have already gone through the process.
To hear what they say on the twenty-sixth, I think we need to listen and see what they have to say.
Is anybody going to the, to the, in public involvement meeting?
I'll be there too.
I was planning on going, just to listen to.
I would encourage you guys to go, but I was also encourage you guys to discuss them on yourselves on which one you're going to, so we don't have a quorum. Council's already, council, council, two members of council are gonna be at each one.
How many allowed of us? Four, three, three, we're allowed three.
We have seven, we have four.
We have seven. Yeah, we can have three.
Yeah, you can have three, just can't have four.
Well, and are, are any of them gonna be virtual, is there a virtual?
Yeah, there's a virtual.
So virtual, if you're, if you tune in virtually, you don't count, do you? Hey, Mr. Law Pants there, um, if someone, if one of us.
I'm not an attorney, by the way.
I know, but you still like, you know, make us stick to the rules.
I do.
So if one of us during the public hearing, um, logs in to the WebEx.
Public hearing, public information meeting, which one?
Okay, a, any of, like, the one that's coming up on Wednesday.
Public information meeting, okay.
Does that count as we are, you know, uh, are we, is we, do we count towards a quorum, like if there are, like, let's say?
Absolutely, you do.
Okay, even though.
Ken and Kent. They're part of it tonight.
Yeah, but it's.
It counts, it counts as a quorum, so count, what council is doing to next week's public information meetings is they're attending different ones, so they don't constitute a quorum. So that is my recommendation for you all, if you all are interested, to split up.
Yeah, I mean, well, like I said, we're, we have three here and the fourth one, just turn around and go home.
I mean, if, there's, there's one at two, there's one at four, there's one at six, they have the same content.
I think it'd be shocking if four of us were here at the same time.
That's my, that's my advice. I'm the, I'm the quorum police, I won't necessarily be here for all of them, but I will swat someone away if I have to.
Ken or Kent, um.
I'm just a cardboard.
Did you guys, did you guys hear, um, that about joining the public information session on Wednesday? Just, if you're going to come, just alert someone so that we make sure that we don't have more than two of us there at any time.
No, more than three. No, more than three.
Oh, more than three, okay. We should be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I said we're not.
And this is the twenty-seventh.
Yes, next Wednesday.
Yes, I heard, thank you.
If you, uh, if you see me running toward you next, next Wednesday hissing, that means you're gonna have to leave.
What, what time were you gonna call it?
I'm gonna go two.
You're gonna go two-ish?
Michael's here when he wants to be here.
Not committing to that Wednesday.
So you two are two.
Ish, I could only make six if I.
Six.
John can't go.
Eight, that's whatever. I, I, I was planning and then found out I will be.
The twenty-seventh, right?
Yes. So, so just by that, I can tell there won't be more, there won't be a quorum at a single time, so you guys are fine.
I'll probably actually be out of town.
There you go. But I still wanna see his hiss though, come on.
I, I probably won't, but I, I can't, it looks like I've got a freaking nine AM meeting.
And I'll, and I'll mention, the P I M minutes will be presented to you guys.
They'll be in your packets for the.
During that preliminary review.
Yeah, but it's, it's a whole lot more interesting to listen.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
No, like I say, I encourage you guys to come.
And just a reminder, these meetings are not conducted by the village, so they're not staffed by us, that's purely developer responsibility. So if anything goes wrong, blame them, not me.
I will, staff will be present to.
We'll be here.
Clarify.
The new village hall for it? No, no, they're following the ordinance, they're not using it for a private event, so.
Alright, any other plan out please?
That's it.
Okay.
I think.
What do you guys say? We'd be out of here before dark, so.
You did. You're cutting it close.
We don't want him to get run over when it's planting. Alright, um, so let's go ahead and review any action items.
Final version of the text amendment.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Alright, uh, let's go around for board member comments, Rich, how about we start with you, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, and that, no comments today, thank you.
Mine would be congratulations to Kelly and Rich on being elected chair and vice chair, sorry I wasn't here for that.
Yeah, if you would've been here, you might've been it.
I planned my absence.
Strategically?
And a big thank you to John for leading the way and setting the bar very high, so, uh, we appreciate everything you've done in the years beforehand. Don't, don't, well, Mike, I'll win you again next year, you never know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna snub me out?
Yeah, he stepped down for one year, is what I understood, so. Hope we thank you, John, Kelly and Rich, good luck, we're here to support you all the way.
Feel like I've made enough comments this evening, so, no, and, but truly, thank you, um, to everybody for their hard work. I know that Hunter and Austin, this is not an easy thing, and I know that it is a learning curve, and I appreciate all of us figuring this out together for whatever is best for Marvin as a whole, so, and thank you, John.
One thing I've got is, I said, as I said, I hope this is my personal issues are, are gonna be over before, you know, before next year. I actually miss our pre-meetings, I don't know how it went with you and how y'all are working out, but it, it give me a much better feel about what, what to expect.
Well, if you need us to, you know, call you in, we're just gonna call.
Two's not a quorum, so that's fine.
And I don't, I don't have any, I, I appreciate, uh, I know we talked before reading about, um, putting this together, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and this, the fin, the final copy will have the blue and red, I just, I didn't wanna go in and make those without really knowing where we wanna go.
It's still just helpful to have what is and which regulations are, so, um, Ken Marino, do you have any, uh, board comments?
Hi, how's it going?
Okay, Kent, gotta use my articulation. Alright, and our distinguished Mr. Bob. Murphy's, Robert.
Bobert.
Bobbert. Do you call him Bobbert?
Just be funny.
Whatever, just call me for dinner.
Call me too.
Um, and Rich, as you're now, you know, taking over the mantle. John, uh, you know, uh, how I feel that you've dedicated yourself uh, for many years to the village in various ways. And, uh, I wanna tell you that, uh, you know, that Mike is right when he says that, you know, there's some big shoes to fill, but at least, uh, you've all got a chance to try some of the shoes, because this is probably the last time you're gonna meet here in this, uh, hall.
Don't jinx that, please.
I, I prophesied it, no, it's gonna happen, I gotta think optimistically.
Show here, show up here with a truck and help move some boxes.
I got my trailer hitch, I can.
Yeah, I got some boxes I own to bring, but, uh, anyway, congratulations, you know, cherry to the first meeting, Kelly. And, uh, you know, yeah, we've got, uh, something on our plates here, I don't think that we're gonna be dealing with.
Brave new world, here we go, buckle up.
Your comments.
I, I already made a comment. I, I said, I think, I think Hunter, I said buckle up, yeah. I thanked Hunter for, um, putting this together, the, uh, yeah, anyway, um, alright, if we have no other comments, uh, can we get a?
Move to a chair.
Move to a chair.
Second. All there? Alright, everybody have a great, uh, rest of your week and, uh.